I'll call the special city council meeting of June 10th, 2020 to order at noon. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard. Oops, I forgot to call him. Jeff Gard.
Here.
Sorry, Jeff. Melina Meyer. Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
David Gleason.
I'm here.
That's Quorum.
Intention, taking a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, Gleason, and second, was that Schaefer?
Schaefer, yep.
Okay, is there any objection to the agenda submitted? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as submitted. Does council have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to disclose?
No. That's my roll call. Oh, wait, I do.
Okay, hearing none, we have a guest speaker from the, for the incident management team reports. Do we have anyone online for that? Dr. Sanders, Mr. Trumbly, Hicks?
Yeah, this is Mr. Trumbly and Mr. Hicks. We don't have anything at this time.
Okay, council, are there any questions for the incident management team? And let me get the, go through the list here, starting with Councilman Sherman.
No question.
Gard.
No questions.
Gleason.
Yeah, just wanted to ask Paul and Mike, I was hoping to ask Dr. Sanders, but what you guys think of the mask rule? It's, you like to see that stay implemented, or are you guys opposed to that?
Um, this is Mike. You know, for now, we'd like to leave it as is. It seems to be working, having some effect. And it keeps people on their toes, I think, reminds them to stay clean and reminds them of social distancing. So I think where we're at right now, we're in a good place. We haven't had any real problems with cases here in town. And we're starting to see these sporadic outbreaks elsewhere in the state. So I think we should be status quo on that for the time being. That's just, that's my feelings on it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay, you guys are really quiet there on your end, but Councilman Meyer.
No questions, thanks.
Baylor.
Yeah, I do. Recently traveled, and while we were waiting for the leave Seattle, it was announced over the PA system that if we come into Alaska, we would have to fill out the forms, we would have to have a shot in 72 hours or make arrangements. They're basically the state mandate. So as we flew into Juneau, they also announced on the plane, and they had the forms, they handed the forms all out to everybody. You get off in Juneau, you get your luggage, you can't leave the place without going through their line. They collect the forms, they talk to you whether you've had a shot or not, you need proof, if you don't have a shot, um, excuse me, a test. And you're going to be staying in Juneau, they actually usher you down, then you can get a test taken. So that was interesting. And then, of course, when you come to Cordova, Yakatah and Cordova, there's no announcement, there's no requirement, you just get off the plane and come in. And I know we have testing available. So I'm curious as to why we're not pursuing the same as Juneau, because that would, as we get into our sport fishing season, I'm assuming some of our local businesses will start bringing people in, it seems like that routine of testing like that would be, be really the way, I mean, much more effective than wearing a mask, everything. So I'm just curious why we're not doing that? Maybe there's a reason, or maybe we're thinking about doing that. So that was my question.
Uh, this is Mike again. I know Dr. Sanders met with the ambassadors, and my understanding is the plan is that they're going to have a, a nurse out at the airport to administer the tests when people come in. As far as the form, the mandate says that you have to show the form, and you have to show your proof of your test. I don't know what the shot is you're talking about, but the, all I'm aware of is testing and the form. So our, my thought on the form is if they don't have the form, we give them the form, say, here you go, fill it out and submit it online. It's a state form. We're not collecting forms, we're not collecting anything from them. We're, we're kind of viewing it as we're the sterile area, and they're coming from the dirty area, uh, just to make it kind of a simple explanation. And we don't want any cross contamination, if we can avoid it. But my understanding is there is a plan to have somebody at the airport to do testing for those that need it.
And then Councilman Baylor had an additional response from a city manager.
Um, just to add to what Chief Hicks just shared with you, we have hired Renee Lindo in cooperation with CCMC on the medical team. She will be in place to test folks who are getting off weekend flights, um, north and southbound on Saturdays and Sundays. And right now, the medical team, because there's testing available Monday through Friday, would like anyone arriving to get their testing done at either Alanco or CCMC as scheduled because it's easier for them to have appropriately deployed PP, protective PPEs on individuals. And we don't yet have a nurse that could work, that we want to have to work seven days a week. They feel they have adequate coverage for folks who need the testing. And as Mike said, the forms are state forms, and the reason that Juneau had the testing is because the state has deployed in four or five different airports, state resources to make that testing available. It's Juneau, Anchorage, Fairbanks, I can't remember what other communities, but the state is actually, has their own personnel on the ground doing those testing and collecting those forms. So in Cordova, again, it is a state form, and they are requesting that those forms be filled out online and submitted. And we, of course, have testing available now, seven days a week, starting this weekend.
Okay, and that, and I missed, oh, when I said shot, I meant testing, so. But I guess the other, and I understand all that, I guess my curiosity was, you know, at, at the terminal in Seattle, they announced that you would have to have these forms. As we flew in, flew to Juneau, they stated that you would have to have these forms filled out. Uh, when we got to Yakatah, Cordova, there's not a mention by anybody. And so by last airline seems willing to do it as they come into Juneau, why wouldn't it not be willing to make that mention as they come into Cordova, and they could even mention that testing is available, I think.
Right.
Well, I think a lot of people on that plane would have no idea that that, that was procedure that was available. So just curious on that.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm not sure why they aren't, Alaska Airlines isn't making that announcement. But the good news is that we do have ambassadors meeting every flight, and those folks are making it clear to anyone coming out of the airport that these are resources that are available, these are things you have to do, this is Cordova's rules. So I feel like we've, we are hopefully covering that. But we can check with Alaska Airlines as well.
Hello, this is Mike again.
Yes, Chief Hicks.
Yeah, um, and I think part of the reason that they haven't started announcing it here yet is the mandate just came out. And I don't think they, the folks at Alaska Airlines, because they were asking me a little bit about it the other day, they're not sure what they're supposed to say at this point. Because they do, or have been announcing the 14-day quarantine and the stuff that's previously been in place here in town. I, I think it's just a matter that they don't, they don't know what they're expected to say at this point from us, because I think that's part of what you guys are deciding today, what part of the mandates we're going to follow and or not follow, is my understanding.
Well, they, Alaska Airlines announced it Friday and Saturday, so, I mean, the mandate was just proposed, and Alaska Airlines knew about it Saturday, so I don't think it's a question of they didn't know what to ask or say. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Chief Hicks's point was that it is a requirement to come into the state, but it's not a requirement in Cordova, because we still have the 14-day quarantine in place.
That's correct.
Okay. Was that, was that all, Councilman Baylor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Schaefer, for the incident management team, any questions?
No, not right now, thank you.
Allison.
No questions, thank you, guys.
Okay, any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, incident management team, and audience comments again can be directed to 253-6202. If you have any audience comments that you'd like to provide for the record, that dial-in number is 253-6202. And we have no calls at this time, and again, remember, there's a 30-second or more delay between the YouTube streaming and what's happening live here in the city council chambers. And also remember, you can refer to the agenda at the bottom, but as you, as we take your call, please remember to mute your YouTube in the background, and to please stay on the line if our on-hold system is working. We think it is at this time, and you'll hear on-hold music until we take your call, and then just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to testify. So that number again is 253-6202. And at this time, we don't have any calls, so I'll move on through the agenda, and we'll just watch the phone for audience comments. So council, we have a letter from Ellen and Katie Roehmhill on page one. Is there any council comments on that? Sherman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, I did just want to respond to maybe get something on the record to Ellen and Katie, and I appreciate the time that they're taking in writing these letters to us. But, and I, overall, after I was reading this, I think we're, I understand their concerns, but I think they are like many others, wanting to know when this is going to end, and I get that. But I feel like the simple and honest answer is that we really have no idea, as much as, you know, it would be nice to say, it's got a date. Um, we do have a date, our temporary emergency order, you know, for review, so that's already in the book. But, um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I understand the concerns. I watch, I read, I devour state, national, and international news every day. And I'm particularly interested as the nation and our state opens up, what's going to happen, and I only see cases climbing. And I know that some of that can be attributed to additional testing that's now available, but it's not the majority of the reasons. And Alaska continues to increase cases every day. Another death today, um, we're past Montana, we're past Hawaii. You know, we are climbing, and I think masks are really the only way we can still protect the vulnerable in our community, the compromised people. They're an easy, low-risk intervention. Wearing masks has just been proven by, and I know there's controversy with WHO and CDC, but I'm listening to Dr. Sanders, and I'm listening to Dr. Zink, and they, they mask provide the greatest amount of protection for ourselves and for those around us. So I wanted to encourage everyone to read the op-ed piece in the ADN today, where over 160 healthcare workers called for a statewide mask health mandate, and Dr. Zink and Dr. Sanders both encouraged us all to wear a mask. And I've been appalled recently at the treatment of people who are wearing masks, um, by others who deliberately walk over and cough on them or make remarks, and I think we need to have just some respect. And if you choose to wear a mask, which you should be in Cordova, because it's a rule, we're doing it for everybody. Um, and I, I appreciate their thoughts, and I'm going to continue to read their letters and try and, um, come up with answers that I can do in public, um, for them, but that's, I just wanted to respond, because I think the masks are very important. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Councilman Gard. Any comments on correspondence?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilmember Sherman said, and from what I've been able to find out, if everybody wears a mask, we reduce the rate of transmission by about 95%. So it is an effective measure. None of us like it, but it is an effective measure to protect those in the community that are more vulnerable. Thank you.
Councilman Gleason.
I'd just echo both those comments. They were to the point. Well said.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah, I agree with what has been said. I know it's, it's tough, and I, I see a lot of people around town being a lot more relaxed about the mask rule, but, um, I think that is the best course of action that we, we can do right now, and it, it seems to be helping, and as we're watching the state numbers grow, um, we need to be really careful in Cordova and protect our most vulnerable here, so, that's all.
Councilman Baylor.
Uh, no comment.
Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, I would also just like to echo the comments about the mask wearing. And, and I appreciate the letter that they sent, and they put a lot of time into it, a lot of thought. It was good to hear their, their point of view, but one of the statements is that the CDC and WHO don't agree on mask wearing, and the WHO has recently changed their stance on mask wearing, and they're now recommending that, um, people outside of the healthcare world wear masks. And that study, there's a study that just came out a few days ago that synthesized 170-some, um, different studies that have gone on during COVID, and they found that mask wearing and social distancing are the best ways to stay healthy and protect yourself and your community during this time. And so, yeah, masks are literally like the cheapest and most effective way to, to stay safe. So I just wanted to, yeah, echo those comments and add that.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I think Roehmhill's there for their, for their letter. I guess I'm a deacon in that church. I, I'm not in favor, since we're, we're talking about mask mandates and et cetera now, I'm not in favor of any government mandate that can't be enforced, which this can't be. I think you're better off spending your time encouraging it and stating the pros and maybe the few cons that there is. I, I agree that, that there's more, more pros than cons, but I think our time is better off spent rather than making an unenforceable government regulation, uh, in encouraging and educating people on, on the pros of, of doing that activity. So thank you for your letter, and again, I'm a deacon in that church. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments on correspondence, council? Hearing none. Under new business, we have item resolution 06-20-25, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska approving the license for a mobile restaurant for Jose Avila.
I don't know, Jaguet?
Jaguet, I'm going to, I hope I didn't butcher that too bad, doing business as Cordova Mexican Food.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion, Gleason, second. Sherman, I believe.
Correct.
Would you like to speak to the motion, Councilman Gleason?
He has a great idea. Love Mexican food.
Councilman Sherman.
Yes, I'm in, in favor of this. I've worked with Jose numerous times when he did his pop-up kitchens, um, and at the Cordova Center. And I also volunteered with him at the Moose Lodge, and he's a responsible business owner, and I'd be happy to see a little gap filled in this summer.
Hey, discussion, Councilman Allison.
No discussion, all for it. Thank you.
Schaefer.
No, nothing to add. I'm in favor.
Meyer.
I'm in favor, too.
Uh, Baylor.
Yeah, I support it.
Uh, Gard.
I support it, but I've got one question. Do we need to make an amendment or exemption? Um, our mobile restaurant width restriction is eight feet, and I believe the trailer that's been used historically and is going to be used for this is eight and a half feet wide? Just a question there.
Already been.
The resolution says that you're, that you're doing it regardless of that piece of code. So the resolution already has a whereas that's accepting that.
Okay. I missed that. Thank you. I'm in favor.
Okay, it sounds like council's ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
David Allison.
Yes.
David Gleason.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Jeff.
Tom Baylor.
Yep.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, next item is resolution 06-20-26, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska adopting recommendations of the incident management team, medical unit of medical directors confirming implementation in Cordova of the revisions to state mandate ten, effective June 11th, 2020.
I'll move.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, Gard, and that was a second. Schaefer.
I think Meyer had it first.
Or was that Meyer in there?
Yes, I think it was me, Sherman.
Oh, Kathy.
Oh, Sherman, okay. Uh, motion, Gard, second. Sherman, would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Gard?
Um, I, we're all in favor of opening things up as soon as medically feasible, and we've got the word from the medical team that they think it is a good idea to both, A, follow the state's out-of-state travel mandate, and, but also, B, in their recommendation to uphold the mask rule. So I'm in favor of this. That's all.
Okay, Councilman Sherman.
Yes, for those same reasons that Councilman Gard has mentioned, and I also just being on the PIO, I know that there are plans are in place in the airport, um, ambassadors, the information that we have out there is going really good. I think maybe we'll just clear up Alaska Airlines' announcement, but, um, I'm all in favor of this part.
Thank you. Discussion, Councilman Schaefer.
Um, yes, I mean, honestly, I, I do have personal anxieties about the new travel guidelines for out-of-state travelers. But we do have to continue to open up and learn how to live with this virus, and I, I trust the advice and the direction of our medical team and our emergency management team. And so I am in support of this. I just, we all need to keep in mind that we have a personal responsibility now to keep ourselves and the community safe and healthy. So people just need to keep taking it seriously and not get too relaxed, even as we continue to open up.
Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, I support it. The only comment I have is I'm not sure why we wait till tomorrow to make it effective, but I'll support it as written.
Councilman Meyer.
Yeah, I think Councilman or Schaefer said kind of what I'm thinking. I, I've heard it from a lot of people, that allowing out-of-state travelers coming in, and that has been a large concern with the quarantine being lifted now. I think that we do have a good medical team, and I am going to vote in favor of the medical advice and the recommendation that we got here today. But I do think it's a good message to put out there that, um, you know, we need to be careful in Cordova. We don't want to see an outbreak happen here in our community. We really need to protect those most vulnerable, the elderly and immune-compromised individuals in this town. And, um, I know it does fall on personal responsibilities, but I do believe that Cordova is, is a community, and we're a really strong community because we work well together. So, um, even though it's personal responsibility and businesses, um, we would, would like people to try to think a little collectively and as Cordovans, as the community together, um, I think that we can help each other out. And I do think visitors coming into Cordova, people are pretty careful about wearing masks on planes and having them while they're traveling and going into new communities and wearing them. So I'm glad that we have our airport ambassadors there with masks and just reiterate it. And, um, the more that everybody else in town can also wear their mask, um, just kind of showing the message that, that's what we expect in this community and for you coming in this, and it is personal responsibility, but we're in this together. And, um, I think Cordova will fare well if we, we think collectively like that. I will support this, and thank you for the, thanks to the medical team and to the management team for these recommendations. It really helps our decisions out and hearing from the community, so thank you.
Okay, discussion, Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I support the, the resolution. Once again, I'll state that government mandating completely unenforceable things, you know, it's all personal responsibility, even the quarantine is personal responsibility. There's nobody following you or putting a red X on your forehead that doesn't dissolve for 14 days. Uh, there's, there's no way for the state or the city to detract that kind of thing. So I support the resolution, but again, um, So, um, I support the resolution, um, but again, um, mandates that are unenforceable are really kind of false, false mandates. I, I'd prefer to spend our time, uh, discussing the pros of, of doing things and, and the personal responsibility involved rather than coming up with government regulations that are unenforceable. So, uh, anyway, I support the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Gleason?
I agree with Councilman Schaefer and I do support this, um, but we do need to be diligent. And as a commercial fisherman, something that a lot of people don't know is when we have these long closures, a lot of transient fishermen go home. I mean, they can spend eight days here or they can go home and, and then they're flying back and of course, the risk goes up when that happens and it's been going on since fishing started. So, we just need to be diligent. Um, so, I am in favor of, uh, moving forward with this, so.
Okay, council, it sounds like you're ready to vote on this one. Um, roll call, please.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, council, uh, your next item is resolution zero six dash two zero dash two seven, a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, continuing the city's declaration of a local emergency and acknowledgement of a statewide emergency resulting from COVID-19.
No move.
Have a motion, Gleason? And a second, was that Sherman?
Yes.
Second Sherman. Uh, Councilman Gleason, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, I'm in favor of it. It's gonna be around for a while.
Councilman Sherman?
Yes, I agree and, um, I would just point out Anchorage has done the same thing.
Okay, uh, Councilman Allison, discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support the resolution mostly because, um, I think it, it affects the numerous funding capabilities that, that this thing has. Uh, I don't think that, uh, um, I think what we've been doing is preparing for an emergency, but I really haven't seen any real emergency in Cordova at this point in time. But I will support it because of the funding mechanisms that are current in place from the federal, states and, and other agencies. So, uh, I'll support it this time, but, uh, again, I haven't seen the emergency yet, but we've been preparing for one, that's for sure.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
No comment.
Uh, Councilman Gard?
Yeah, I'm in favor. No comment.
Uh, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I'm in favor and I would echo Councilman Allison's comments.
Councilman Schaefer?
Um, I am in favor and I would just like to say that I think it's all of the preparation that we've done as a community and as a state that has made it so we haven't had, you know, an emergency. So, I think all of this preparation and planning has allowed us to avoid an emergency to this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. And just before we go to vote, I just wanna say for the record, I really appreciate, um, each councilman stating what your, uh, position is and then why. I think it's really good form and it facilitates, um, meeting remotely like this, but I, I think it works well in, in person as well. So, um, sounds like you're ready to vote on this one. Uh, roll call, please.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, council, uh, the next item is a, um, council concurrence of the two thousand sixteen Pink Salmon Disaster Funding Projects. And, uh, you can see the, uh, staff has prepared an outline there and there, there are some legal requirements and some parameters on that. But, um, just to open it up for council discussion, I guess it's a vote. So, um, would entertain, uh, motion.
Oh, move to prove.
Second?
Okay, um, Susan, is that okay? It's the way.
It would be the motion listed in, uh, Rome numeral two there.
Okay, great.
If that's.
I'll just read it into the record here. Uh, so this is, um, page twelve, the agenda item, second of the packet, and that motion is, uh, to approve city expenditures of six hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars, three cents allocated to the city of Cordova for loss experienced due to the two thousand sixteen Gulf of Alaska Pink Salmon Disaster approximately as follows. Half for new and or refurbishment of existing cranes in this Cordova Small Boat Harbor and half to engineer and install water system upgrades to enhance water capabilities for Pink Salmon processing needs. Okay, and I'm sorry again, that was, um, uh, Gleason and second Sherman? Or Schaefer?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Gotcha. Okay, uh, Councilman Allison, would you like to speak to that motion?
Gleason.
Gleason? Looked right at him and said, Allison. Councilman Gleason, thank you.
Obviously, the money's gotta go towards, you know, the harbor. Right, I'm definitely in favor of spending this money in whatever fashions we come up with today, as long as it's in the harbor there. Um, Ken Jones wrote a pretty good letter with a lot of good ideas. I don't know if we can afford all of those, but, um, I would have a question to Tony if I can ask that now?
Through the manager?
Through the manager, sorry.
Yes, please.
What do you think of the three-stage dock? I was there yesterday and there are some things in there that are kinda banged up. Do you think that that would be pretty cheap fixes? One of the ladder, it just kinda, you know, when you gotta climb off your rig up to the crane.
Um, I don't, I don't think it'd be a cheap fix at all after what we've, I mean, to do it right. I mean, if, I know, uh, Ken Jones was talking about redoing the deck and the stringers and...
No, I'm, I'm just tell.
We can do, we can, we're gonna do a ladder on it and redo that.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's pretty cheap.
There's things that, that should get shaped on that.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
And I think they'd be cheap.
Yeah.
So, I would like to see that added in there because that gets used like crazy.
Well, that one, we can, I mean, we can do that out of budget. So, we actually ordered a new ladder.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Question answered. So, we'll just have to come up with, I mean, or agree to what's already in the, in here. So, that's all I got.
Okay, uh, Councilman Schaefer, to your second?
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, I was just wondering if I could get just a little more detail on what the plans are for the crane project? So, what, is it replacement or refurbishment or some combination? Will that be, I, I just don't know if you figured out what the budget is for getting new cranes and what it would cost to fix and grease up the old ones?
Um, we looked at costs, they're about eighty thousand to a hundred thousand, depending on the size. That's just to buy them a piece. So, I thought was we'd buy two new and then refurbish one of the old ones. So, we'd put an extra one out on the city dock.
Okay, that's great. And then, what are the kinds of water upgrades that, um, would be undertaken?
Okay, your manager is gonna switch hit with staff here and, uh,
I'm gonna defer to Sam.
Public Works Director.
Okay, I hope you can hear me through a mask.
Can you hear okay, Councilman Schaefer?
Yep.
Okay, so the idea is to get an engineer to get us the syphus going through Crater Lake 'cause if you don't have water, you don't process any pink salmon. Direct hit to this pink salmon fishery. So, that's our idea to make that a more permanent, um, solution. And, uh, yeah, it saved our hineys last time, last summer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, um, so you're in favor of that motion in general, Councilman Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so discussion, Vice Mayor Meyer?
Um, yeah, I, I think that we're getting this money that should definitely go towards, um, the fishery in some way, whether it's, uh, um, water system or, um, doing some work in the harbor for the cranes and whatnot. Um, I think the water system is kind of higher on my, um, list of priorities 'cause last year we did run into, um, some major water, water problems and, um, big thanks to city staff for figuring that out and changing on valves and, um, really having that management, manage it to, um, a degree that they never had before. And we were really reliant on that, um, lake water and, um, so having some additional water for Crater Lake for the Pink Salmon season, when we really need a lot of water. I think it should be a pretty big priority. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Allison, discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess question, is, is, has this just been reviewed by staff or has, has the Harbor Commission itself or any other, um, planning commission, anybody else been involved with this at all?
No, none. Th- this is a relatively new piece of information, um, and we have a fairly quick turnaround on getting this out, so we've not been able to get this in front of Harbor or planning.
Okay, wh- why is the quick turnaround, is, is it not due till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four that it's been spent by?
I'm gonna let Sam speak to that. Uh, it's when it needs to be expended by, but the funds have been awarded and now we have to accept them with a specific, um, direction and some of these require RFPs and a process that is lengthy. So, but I'll let Sam speak to it.
I don't, I guess, uh, Harbor Commission might be a good process to run through. I don't, I never really thought about taking it through planning and zoning, um, mostly 'cause it's unrelated to them. Uh, but, you know, if, if that's a direction y'all wanna go, we could do that, um...
Well, what's our timeframe, Sam? That's what I'm asking for.
Well, you're right, correct. We have to have the project completed by March twenty twenty-four. That's the timeframe. I think we keep getting it mixed up with the COVID money, but it's March twenty twenty-four, project completed. So, for the water one, I can speak to a little better than I can to the hoist, um, or crane, sorry. Um, you know, we'd hire, go out for an engineer 'cause we need to understand anchoring and all that stuff. So, I'd say we probably got a, a year and a half on that maybe too, depending on buildings, you know, when we, when the engineers can get it complete and we can get a bid and we can get up there and do it.
Is there a deadline for accepting the, the, the amount?
As soon as possible. At least, I think, my, my discussion.
Ken says he thinks.
Do we, do we have to accept it by a certain date with a proj- project listed or, or do we have some time to do that part?
Ken says we have time.
Okay, well, then, I, I guess my comments are, I would like to see at least the Harbor Commission, uh, look at it and, and get a broader range of, of folks, uh, putting input here. And, and I'd also like to be sure that we've, we're leveraging, um, any other funds that might be available, uh, as matching funds. Uh, for example, the Marketing Association has offered about cranes in the past. Uh, I'd like to make sure we're, we're looking at all of that before I commit to any amount for one or the other. I, I agree that the, the water situation needs to be, be looked at, uh, probably stronger, but, uh, but, uh, I, I would like the Harbor Commission at least to weigh in. It has to be fishing-related and, and they're certainly made up of fishermen, so I'd like to have their input before I admit it to this.
Okay, Councilman Allison, so you could propose, you could propose that as an amendment or wait to hear the rest of council discussion?
Not yet. I'd like to hear the rest of council discussion, but that would be my, my thought is to eventually, uh, refer this to staff to, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'd move to refer to staff, uh, to, uh, run it by the Harbor Commission and, and, uh, in light of, um, reviewing any leveraging that can be done or projects that they might think are higher priority.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Allison, a motion, and, uh, and then, uh, second Baylor, uh, to refer to staff. And just, um, before council discussion, just clarification from staff, are we currently having Harbor Commission meetings or do we have any idea of when we might hold the next Harbor Commission meeting? Yeah, so it relies on a quorum of a lot of fisheries-related participation, so realistically, maybe September or something?
Yeah, it didn't sound to me like there was any, any great big rush, so.
Yeah.
Got, uh, COVID money to worry about and projects to worry about before the end of this year, so, um, I don't think it's a big rush. I think when the Harbor Commission can sit down and look at it good, um, then that would, will be fine as long as there's no deadlines we're missing.
Okay, great. I'll take that as discussion. Um, did you have, uh, further discussion on your motion, Councilman Allison?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, Councilman Ba- Councilman Baylor? I'm sorry, Councilman Allison, was that you?
Yeah, I, I'm done. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I'd echo a lot of Dave's, uh, Councilman Allison words there. And I too had a question on the crane. I remember the joint meeting we had with the Harbor and, uh, the gentleman and all, but my thoughts, I'll just beg this to get the paperwork and to get a crane paid for. So, maybe that didn't work out for some reason, but I, I'd certainly like to see the Harbor Commission explore that. There's no sense spending our money if somebody's willing to give us money for crane. And the water system too, I know we had some money left over and they were doing a study on that. I don't think I even saw that study, but, uh, or maybe it's not done, but I was, I was thinking that there was a thought process of possibly getting water out of the lake with the second line, but, uh, I'll leave that up to Public Works, but maybe they can give us an update on that when this comes back. But, uh, I would support the motion, I'll send it back to staff. Thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion, motion to refer, Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think, um, anytime we can get, um, input, especially with specifically related items like this from these boards and commissions that we have, um, I, I would like to see their recommendations, um, come up with these items. So, I think this is a good, um, amendment to the motion. Um, I also have been kinda thinking about it ever since, um, Allison said it, is planning and zoning, um, if they happen to have a meeting or if the chair of that, um, commission, um, wants to put it in front of the staff board for employ, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing, um, recommendations from that too, 'cause maybe they, if looking at it, you know, for the, um, fishing industry, it's not just the harbor, it's also, um, you know, all the roads that, that those big Pink Salmon, um, containers drive on that, um, tear up the roads to the ones that they're using. It also has to do with the water system in Cordova. I think Cordova's infrastructure is really fishing infrastructure, so it'd be nice to have the point of view from the Harbor Commission that's made up of Harbor and then also the planning and zoning that's maybe thinking about, um, the community as a whole. So, um, those are my thoughts, but I think referring back to staff for some more recommendations would be good.
Okay, uh, Councilman Gleason?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the amendment and I, as far as the, uh, Marketing Association, I think all we have to do is ask for the crane. I'm not sure, 'cause, uh, Jeff actually said it at the meeting, just like Tom said. He said they're willing to buy it, but they haven't, uh, received a request. So, I could ask Tony through Helen, but I am in favor of that amendment. Through Helen, can I ask Tony a question?
Yes, absolutely.
So, is that your take on it? We just need to ask them for that or?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that. There were stipulations put with if they paid for hoists.
What kind?
That only, like, certain people could use it. Like a cannery couldn't use it or anything like that.
Well, the cannery has their own crane, so I don't see that as a problem.
So, I mean, we have people that use our hoist as it is and if that hoist breaks, and we can't promise that no one's gonna use it unless you man it twenty-four-seven or shut it off. So, I'm not saying it's not a good deal and it's a, it's a thing to look into, but there were stipulations put with it that no one else could use it except for single fishermen, as in just, you know, gill nutters and sailors, but not... no one else could use it except for single fishermen, as in just, you know, gill nutters and sailors, but not.
Okay, so in that instance, I would suggest that when planning, or when the harbor commission meets, that Jeff or somebody representing the marketing association is there to answer those questions. Because I, I would be pretty surprised if that, because we're going to own that once we got it. That's going to be our crane. So we would just have to get that worked out in accordance with the rest of our plan. But I do think that it's something that we definitely need to look into, especially if they're a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And I, just for clarification, it's, it's not an amendment to the motion, it's a motion to refer to staff, so.
Oh, I thought he was also amending to have the.
I said amendment, but he, he didn't, he didn't make a motion amend. He actually just made a motion to refer to staff, so that's what we have.
Okay, well, then I will support that motion also.
Okay, great. No, yeah, no, Councilman Meyer said that and you said that too. I just wanted to clarify that it was a, a motion to refer, so. Um, Councilman Schaefer?
Um, if there isn't a rush, I think it would be good to get input from the harbor um on this. So I could support that. I would support um the motion. But hopefully they'd be able to meet before September, I guess, you know, to start getting the ball rolling on these projects.
Okay, uh, Councilman Gard?
Yeah, I also, as long as we're not running ourselves up against any time clock. But one other comment, question on um discussion between uh Gleason and Tony was we talked about putting an extra crane, one that we refurbished out onto the old Coast Guard dock. Couldn't we then, having two cranes out there, move all fish bang out of the harbor? So we don't afford ever, everything to happen at the free stage dock?
I, I see a harbor master nodding yes, yes, and yes.
Okay, so the, using the new crane for other than processor use could kind of be alleviated there by doing that, it seems. So anyway, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Sherman, to the motion to refer?
Yes, um, I'm in favor of it. I, I thought Councilman Allison had some good questions. So if there, I'd like the staff to confirm the time for approval to make sure that we don't make a mistake here on that. I like what council or what staff proposed. Um, I understand the need for the water system upgrades. I, I would agree with Councilman Baylor. I'd like to look at what Yak Lake has to offer, maybe a little bit more detail on the water. Um, would be really useful to me. Um, I think it's a great idea to go back to harbor. And I also hope they meet before September and uh planning and zoning, I think should have a say. And as part of, as um maybe potential partners for either funding or some sort of partnership. Um, I would say we reach out to CDFU, the marketing association, why not ask the cannerys? They could chip in and maybe NVE. So I mean, everybody uses a harbor and these facilities, so um the arm can reach far. And then finally, I, I did agree with um ten, ten points about the boatyard. I think uh restroom facility and more uh electric uh stations down there would really, I mean, that place is just booming. So the more that we can put into that, the better as well. So I'm in favor, um, but I'd like to see more detail in the, in the next time it comes before us.
Okay, um, thank you, Councilman Sherman. I just paused for a second because I didn't have a mayor's report for this packet. But um, I did meet with Kristen Carpenter, who is our new economic development district um chairman. And I know manager Howard is on that committee and others and um CDFU, or I'm sorry, um, marketing association and CDFU and myself and uh Kristen met, uh looking at potential EDA projects for Cordova and just had the initial discussion on that before reaching out to stakeholders. So just thought I'd mention that for the record. Uh, but that might be a potential partner for infrastructure. Uh, because there's CARES Act funding that will probably come through the EDA. Any further discussion on the motion to refer, counsel? And did I hear a question, Councilman Sherman, that you would like to confirm that that timeline uh to confer with the harbor commission and, and planning commission won't be a problem?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Sometimes things like that sneak up on us, so as long as there's no um timeframe, I mean, we should just reconfirm.
Okay, I would direct that to uh manager Howard and our staff.
Yeah, so uh we'll double check on that and make sure if there's any urgency, we'll bring it back. Um, but otherwise, we'll go down the path that you're suggesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So roll call vote, please? I'm sorry, what's that? Is there, yeah, we can do, this is a voice vote, counsel. Is there any objection to referring to staff? With a caveat that it'll come back with a, a little broader picture of where we're headed with water and that it'll, it'll uh get before harbor commission and planning and zoning commission. Hearing none, uh motion uh carries, it's approved. Uh, item eight, uh, this is a council discussion on CARES funding. And on page seventeen, you can see a, a draft uh there from manager and staff regarding CARES Act funding. And again, this also has some legal requirements and stipulations and um guidelines, I guess, rails.
This is Councilman Sherman.
Uh, Councilman Sherman, and then I'll go through the list after you.
Um, I, I'm, was excited to see this document and sort of see some of the detail. It's um, I, I'm in favor of the breakdown. I, I was surprised to see some of it. But I am mostly happy to see that there might be some assistance for our local economy. Um, I have been contacted by a number of small business owners who are struggling. Um, so I'm hoping that we can provide um something along with everything else that's out there right now to these small businesses. Because they are uh major supporters of our community. And that's all I really wanted to add.
Okay, uh, Councilman Gleason, Gleason, any comments or feedback?
Um, no, I, I like the way it's listed out to you and you just make sure we're accurately recording everything we're doing. So that uh, you know, there's no question. That's a lot of dough to be chilling out. So gonna make sure we're keeping good records.
Yes, um, counsel, would you, you mind if we just got a brief from the manager?
That'd be great.
So I would just want to share with you that this money is um, has literally dropped out of the sky into our laps in, in very short order. And there is a requirement that this be expended by December thirty first of this calendar year. Um, we got our first distribution as the memo states of one point seven million approximately. Um, we will not get another distribution until we spend eighty percent of that. So as you can imagine, we're on a very accelerated timeline. So the document before you is specifically um buckets, if you will, that um we as staff thought would be appropriate, either because the state is requiring us to do certain things in order to go um, to protect our facilities and reopen them. We are allowed to expend a pretty substantial bottom of the money on first run, um, first responders and incident management team. We've incurred those costs and because all of our public safety officers and all of our public safety expenses, for the most part, can be expended, the CARES funds can be expended on those things. It allows us to basically replace um city funds with the CARES Act funding for those expenses. So that's a good thing for our bottom line as we look forward and with some degree of uncertainty about how the, the economy is going to be looking in the next six months and what our revenue sources are going to be. The other buckets, um, the facility enhancements, those are requirements by the state. We have to make sure we have safety protocols in place and that will require some changes to our, um, either how we do our business or how our buildings are functioning. Again, these are our kind of good guestimates, but until such time as counsel says, th- these are the buckets we want you to focus your resources on. These are guestimates. As we expend the resources, we may find that we have too much in one bucket and not enough in another. And we will be able to make adjustments. Um, and again, I promise you, we will not leave a penny on the table. So if on December twenty ninth, we still have a hundred thousand dollars in the bank, we will figure out a way of getting it out. So um, I, I don't think we'll have an issue with that. The other three categories, CARES Act administration, non payroll expenditures, those, um, that particular one is about um any extra legal fees. We've been racking up the legal fees as we've been trying to keep up with state mandates. We hired a communications consultant to help us get the word out to our community. We've spent money on things that um, we're aligned with. How do we make sure that um the community understands what's going on? How do we make sure we are legally doing what we're doing? So that again is a number, a bucket, um, that will cover all those sorts of contractual and other expenses that are related to making sure we're, we're doing um, doing the work we need to be doing. The last two categories, the nonprofit grants and the individual assistance grants are ideas, um, I think totally up for discussion. But I want to give you a little bit of the rationale behind it. As you are probably aware, there's been a lot of money pumped into businesses. Between the initial um funding from the feds, the PPP grants and um a number of small businesses weren't able to qualify for those. Then the state of Alaska came out with a two hundred and eighty million dollar grant program that was designed specifically for those little businesses. Under fifty employees, um, lack, maybe doesn't have a degree of sophistication. And those grants, um, that application program is up and running now and available for all small businesses to apply for. And I will share that as a small business owner myself, I applied for it. It was a very easy process. Um, and my understanding is the money is starting to get out and be deployed and that there are Cordova businesses that have received those funds as of today. The reason to kind of flip the thinking around um direct contributions to businesses and in this instance, the recommendation for individual assistance, is that no economy succeeds without consumers spending their money in our businesses who then turn around and pay us sales tax. So with these kinds of um distributions, we are in a position where we can impact our community members, our community businesses and our city at the same time with this one um approach. It is, um, there's certainly room for discussion around what kinds of small business supports we can provide. And um, and I will throw that all to you, but I just wanted to give a little rationale behind um these dollar amounts. And um, and, and understanding that there is some flexibility certainly available as we start to deploy the resources and get um, get things out to bid. Again, we're going to go through our traditional procurement processes. So um, we may find that there are things that we want to do that, that there's just no way we can get it done this calendar year. We'll have to shift. So um, that is the background and now um feel free to dive in and ask questions as you need.
Okay, Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yeah, um, I think these, these buckets are good buckets, um, with that explanation that that money um might have to be moved around or, you know, this might cost more than this in the end. I am a little, little hesitant, um, say, be the buckets misses the amount for right now because, you know, we're in the summer where even though our population isn't as big as it normally is, probably on a, a different year. Um, I'm really worried about what's to come this fall and winter and what kind of impact that's going to have on local businesses and um residents of Cordova and individuals. So um, I, I like the idea behind the individual assistance grants, but um I think I'm going to need a little more input from the community about it or um think about some other ideas for how to wrap my head around it, maybe a little bit more. But I, I like the idea behind it. Um, and maybe if that distribution was happening, um, maybe right before the Christmases are or around that time of year. I don't know if it's been confirmed or um, if it was just talk about TFD coming earlier this year. So we got this local one later in the year. I could see how that could help um local businesses and individuals. Um, also the facility enhancements, I think with any of this CARES Act funding that we are, we should look really closely into any of these facilities um or city properties that we can enhance. I know we were talking about water before, um, the shipyard, all these places around Cordova that get heavily used that don't have bathroom facilities. I think that we've thought that that um can be a problem and a, and an outbreak. And it's long term, it's good just to have those facilities there, um, even at the campground by the baseball field out white shade. It'd be nice to have hookups for each um stall there. I know that's been kind of on our, our plans in general. But um, you know, we weren't really able to open it because we, there was a shared bathroom, um, and they were using it for quarantine area. So I think that if we could upgrade some of the city properties that we have, I think that would help us long term. And also um, is a response to COVID, I think we found out that we don't have these water bathroom facilities in these locations in Cordova. Maybe needed a little bit more, so that's kind of my input on where to spend the money. So I think for the uh facility enhancements, maybe that bucket maybe should be a little bit more.
Okay, uh, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I, I have a second. I can support the first responders, incident managing payroll. That's a no brainer for me. The uh, the next one, the CARES Act administration, non payroll, a comment on the lawyers who just went with what the state was mandating every time. We wouldn't have to pay those lawyers for all that time making up our own mandate, but we did. Then the facility enhancements, you know, I certainly would like to see what we're talking about with their nonprofit grants. That sounds reasonable. They're doing a lot of good for Cordova. The individual assistance grants, but I'm, I'm not in favor of picking winners and losers in a community. If we can do something that helps out all twenty-three hundred residents, that's one thing. But um, I, I couldn't get behind individual assistance type thing, picking winners and losers. And then the other thing is, is this something that we're going to vote on and move forward? And then uh, I've had this, another board and commission that said, well, you approved it, so we're spending the money any way we want. Or is all this stuff going to come back and kind of get reviewed and discussed, like the facility enhancement? Or is this, uh, once we approve this, the money's spent anyway? That, that, that would be a question.
Okay, uh, I'll direct that to your manager.
So this um document is to get an indication from counsel as to um the directions, the buckets, if you will, that staff should investigate and um fill with expenses. The payroll is just the payroll. I mean, it is what it is. There's nothing we're going to do about that. We will add up the payroll, we'll add up all the benefits and we will allocate that accordingly um as we go. The um CARES Act administration, those are expenses that we've incurred and, and will continue to incur throughout the course of the year. So those, you, really, there's, they're not discussion items, they're just expenses that we're going to have to do. The next three categories certainly, um, it, counsel can, can weigh in on that. But again, the, the conversation, if we could get to a place is, are we comfortable with the buckets? And then um, we can bring back to you um the budget recommendations and the expenditures for each of those buckets, the, the three buckets. The facility enhancements, the nonprofit grants is kind of a, a, a number. Individual assistance grants, just for clarity. Individual assistance grants, just for clarification, the, our idea is to make them available to all residents. So there will be no qualifiers that you have to have an income or this. Everyone is assumed to have been impacted by COVID and, and those resources would be driven directly to individuals with no, no qualifiers required.
Does that help, Councilman?
Yeah. I guess, I guess my final comment would be the facilities enhancement, I would, I'd make that our largest bucket. And I think it was already said by Molina there, that anything we can do to, for our infrastructure and our facilities, that helps out the whole community and it's for the long-term, it's not a, a short-term thing. And we, we may be, we'll be looking at a rough fall with the flu season and other things coming on, which could be even tougher for some people at times. But I would support putting more into infrastructure than individual payment to anybody. So, thank you.
So I just want to comment on that. There's, the document that is on the backside of this is the, the relief fund guidance. And you'll notice this is April 22nd. Well, there's been two that have come out since, and there are more and more restrictions being placed on these funds. And so we, as a city, will have to be extremely careful what we spend these funds on because if we don't spend them correctly, we will be required to reimburse. So just know that any, any expenditure that comes before you will have been screened with the, the state guidelines. And Ken is our expert on that.
Yes, and actually, I just wanted to add the last bucket. The stipulation is that all the, the grants will have to be spent locally. So that, that's a big stipulation. It can't, it's not like a, it's not the, the, like an PFD or the stimulus from the federal that we're, we're working on how to spend it just locally. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, feedback, Councilman Baylor?
No, thank you.
Counselman Allison?
I guess as long as the buckets are expandable or shrinkable, I'm somewhat okay with, with the first few. I have a lot of the same concerns that, that Councilmember Baylor had regarding the grant. I think even if your criteria doesn't have, have specific criteria listed in it, you still end up picking winners and losers, you know? Do you give this storage business 10,000 and this storage business 5,000? Or do you give this grocery store 20,000 and this grocery store 25,000? I just think you end up with, with a lot of hard feelings there and, and I think we need to make sure that we're supporting all of Cordova, you know? Some businesses might only, might only support, you know, 10% of Cordova and some might support 80% of Cordova. So I think if, if we can find ways to support them all somehow, other than that's one thing, but I have a hard time with, with giving individual assistance. I do think that our facility enhancements bucket might need to be a little larger as, as Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Meyer stated, restroom facilities and, and water restroom facilities with running water are, are lacking in several places in Cordova. In addition to the places Vice Mayor Meyer stated, you know, the, the elementary playground is one that could certainly use a running water type facility. Anyway, as, as long as these are, again, the same concern Councilmember Baylor had with, with the, as long as we're not approving this and giving the city card bonds to go spend their 3.4 million and it's going to come back to Cordova, I would like to talk more about the facility enhancements and, and hear what those are going to be before I totally commit to those because, you know, we're the, whether required or not, we're, we're going to be the ones that the community member that, that sees that when they go in to pay their utility bill, they're going to be calling us and saying, what the hell is this? And if we haven't ever heard of it or, or don't, weren't involved in some kind of conversation somewhere along the way, makes us look, look sad. So I would like to have further discussions on the details of this, but as far as getting started with, with some buckets, I think if you need buckets to go, these are one way to go. You might change the name of the last two and combine those, just call it grants instead of individual assistance and nonprofit grants. I, I think they need to be community grants that, that are going to, that are projects that are going to benefit the majority of the, of the community. I want to keep businesses in business and, and support those, but I think there are plenty of other states and federal and other organizational grants and aid that are available for those people and anybody who falls through the cracks, I think we could assist you with that through the grant thing, but, but the one check criteria of those first and, and make sure that we have a nonpartisan, non, some kind of a committee that decides that I don't want to give one person that permission to say yes or no, that this person, this individual gets money, that just sits with me wrong. So as far as giving you a box, there you go, I'm in favor of giving you some pots of money to go with.
Okay, Counselman Allison, I think Manager Howard would like to provide some additional feedback on that. And then I, we do have a caller online, if you can just be patient, we'll be, when we get done with this item on the agenda, we'll go to the phone.
So I just wanted to clarify on the facility enhancements, most of what we're talking about are protective measures that are, again, required by the state. For instance, any public-facing facility needs to have a place where customers and staff can interact without risk of health concerns, so like sneeze guards, hand washing, hand sanitizing stations. The Bedarki Rec Center, for instance, has a significant carpeted area for workout. Carpeting is not easily cleaned, so they're going to rip up the carpet and put a cleanable surface down as flooring. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at. Adding bathrooms, that will be one of those that we'll have to see if that is a permissible expense. So there's a lot of things that we're still investigating and we have a long list of things we would love to see implemented and improved for facilities. But again, these funds are directly related to COVID and we have to be very careful. So I just wanted to clarify that, just to give you a sense of when we talk about facility enhancements, we're talking about things that are required in order for us to open our facilities to the public, what will we have to do, retrofit ASAP to make that, that opening possible.
Thank you. Counselman Schaefer, discussion of?
Follow up on that?
Oh, yes, please, Counselman Allison.
Yeah, just, I, I understand all of that and a quick report in the council packet or an email that lists those things that, that once we decide what we're going to do and know what we have to do, just let us know. That's all I'm asking is.
Sure.
Let us know what other plans are before we, before we actually do it so that we have a heads up before the construction gets done.
Well, I'm going to ask then a mea culpa because we are in a position where we're being asked to open our facilities and many of them are not in a place where they can be opened. So we are already starting to order carpeting for Bedarki, so, not carpeting, flooring for Bedarki so that they can open to the public. We have to have sneeze guards, it's a requirement, so we've already ordered those things. So they're not huge-ticket items, they fall under our $25,000 procurement, but again, anticipating that we want to get our facilities open to the public as quickly as possible, that's libraries, it's museums, it's City Hall. We have already started ordering those things that are being required of us and that these funds are designed to cover. So anyway, mea culpa to all, but we're, we're on a timeline. Already this second round of money will be available June 30th, only if we've expended 80% of the first round of 1.7. So all of these resources are getting pushed out very, very quickly and communities are having to expend them very fast. But we will keep you in the loop and if there's any big-ticket items, obviously, anything over $25,000, we'll go through the normal procurement process for the city and you will see those and have the option to approve.
Yep, just shoot us a report once in a while, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Counselman Allison. Counselman Schaefer to CARES Act funding.
Yeah, um, thank you. I think this seems like a good place to start and I'm generally comfortable with the bucket. I agree with everyone else, but I think, I look forward to a finer scale of extension once you have more of the budgets put together for the different areas and a better idea of how the money will be spent. I think the individual assistance grant is an interesting idea, but again, I'd like to see more information and details on that once it's available and perhaps the Chamber might, I don't know if the Chamber would be a good resource for that, but maybe a good resource for help, how we can help our small businesses, if there's any way that they can benefit from these monies. I also like the idea of the bathroom or wash area that Vice Mayor Meyer and Allison brought up. And perhaps if full ba, we can't do full bathrooms, maybe just having wash stands at parks and playgrounds could be a good idea. You know, Pennicott has some seasonal wash stands outside their bathroom area that could work. And I also agree with Counselman Baylor that upgrades to facilities that will help the whole community over a longer term would be a good investment for these monies if it's, you know, applicable and allowed. Are any of these funds able to help the school system or are they eligible for separate funds?
They have their own buckets of funds, as does the hospital, just so you know. We could use these funds to help any department or any, any entity that we choose as long as we can make a connection to COVID. So for instance, with the school district, maybe they're looking at more distance education, things that they can, they can do from afar. Similarly to us, for instance, one of the, the big things that we're going to be looking at and we'll bring to you obviously, is our method of communication during COVID and council meetings and whatnot. You are certainly very well aware of the challenges we've had, so we'll be able to fix that for future emergencies and for future just general business with the new phone system and other technology improvements. So those are the sorts of things we're looking at, is how do we set ourselves up to do better in the future? And it could be that the school district and others, it'll be, we'll have conversations with them about how they're using their funds, but we might want to partner and make something happen community-wide. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, but again, this is a fast-moving train.
Yeah, okay, that's good to hear. Yeah, so for a general bucket, yeah, I'm in support of this. And yeah, if you could have like a bulleted list even at some point, it'd be good to just be kept in the loop about, you know, what, what you're, what you're thinking and how it's changing.
Yes, thank you, we will definitely do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselman Garten?
Yeah, I understand that the plan is low-grade just because we kind of need it to be now. We haven't had time to put it together, we don't know what all the rules are yet, but I think everybody has a lot of questions yet. So continued communication as we develop this, I think will make everybody more comfortable with it. I don't have a very good understanding of the private nonprofit grant stuff we're talking about, although I support. The nonprofits we do have in Cordova, I'm not sure how it all ties together with COVID, but there are greater minds in mind working on this. I think one thing we need to be careful is we're asking for these assurances as we don't try to slow down the fast-moving train too much or we may derail a lot of our dollars by doing so. But anyway, I'm in support of this, waiting for more information so we have a better idea of what we're doing. That's all.
Okay. Any additional feedback from council on CARES Act funding? Okay, thank you, that's a good discussion and good feedback for staff. If there's no objection to council, I'm going to interject an audience comment here on the agenda before we move on to the next item, which may be somewhat lengthy. Okay, we'll go to the caller on the phone. Okay, you're on the phone caller, if you could just state your name for the record in three minutes, please.
Sure, Becky Shipman, 705 Chase Avenue. I was wondering, I know you're not a part of the, we have a group called the Cordova Maskmakers Group that has made thousands of masks in the last couple of weeks to, for and for the community and continue to make masks daily for the harbor, which appear within hours, and we're unable to keep up with the harbor mask. I'm wondering if it's our, our role that the city could somehow contribute to the harbor mask effort. You know, most of it being, these masks are being made by people who put on time, not being paid. A lot of it coming out of their own pockets, the materials to make the mask, and people are really getting burned out, unfortunately. And we've cleared the Google list for all community members, we did it for the workers and businesses first, and then we did community members second, and we've started doing the harbor. And I'm just wondering if, I know we've reached out to a few different places asking for help keeping the harbor mask bins filled. I was wondering if there was a way to take it somehow? I don't know if we can get with COVID money or what, but we, I don't think people are going to be able to continue the way we've been doing to keep those filled in the harbor. You know, with things that have been coming up, we're doing a really big push to keep them filled in, it's just not happening. They're disappearing within hours of filling the bag. So I would just ask that you guys consider some way of, to alleviate the pressure on the volunteer mask makers with the harbor mask. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much on behalf of city council and the community to you and all the mask makers. And if you can just give the city manager a call, I think she would love to have that conversation with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, council? The next item is the discussion of COVID-19 emergency response. We do have another call right now though, so maybe we can take that before we go on to the next agenda item. Okay, caller, you're on the line, if you could state your name for the record and three minutes, please.
Thank you, thanks. This is Kristen Clark, 507 Fourth Street. I guess calling a couple hats on, one is the staff for the Princeton Sound Economic Development District and also as the advisory board member for the Cordova Community Foundation. So I was speaking to the proposed act, I guess, of the Alaska CARES Act funding that is put forward. And of course, I want to say thank you for including the Cordova Community Foundation in thinking of how that could be distributed. That money would be distributed to non-resident Cordova and for coronavirus-related expenses. It happens that way, I understand. This is not a, this isn't a final breakdown on, on how these are spent. And regarding the individual assistance, I, I know- And regarding the individual assistance, I know that a lot of communities are talking about distributing money to businesses, but I guess I do like the idea of distributing it to individual households for distributing that money as widely as possible. And again, I'm telling you stuff you already know. The city of Valdez did do a household assistance program in May where they gave about $1,800 each household emptiness, and I think they spent, of course, $3 million, and I realize that's not how much we have, but there is a precedent out there for distributing money among individual households as a way of putting money in people's hands that can be circulating through the economy. And I also wanted to encourage council members to contact our Alaska legislators, like Representative Stute, maybe the Vice Edgeman, the coalition leader, about the restriction on money going to businesses only being, at this point, I think it's only available to people who have not received assistance in the past. And I know that there's people, that there are people who have applied early on, they got PPP money and maybe, I know in one case this person only got $1,000. Now this person is ineligible for any of your money, and that just seems really challenging. People did what they did at the time, because that was the information we had. You know, initially Senator Murkowski and Senator Sullivan were saying, just apply, just apply. Make sure you get your application in, while not knowing that we personally might not be eligible weeks later for greater amounts of money that would really be useful. So I encourage council members to contact legislature legislators and urge that that restriction be modified so that people can apply for this, so that businesses can apply for this Alaska CARES Act money, even if they did already get some amount of PPP money before. So those are my comments. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Kristin. I'm just going to mention on the record, Representative Stutes did call last Friday and indicated that all businesses should apply even if they got other assistance. It's very likely that the state legislature, if they even need to, will go back into session to make businesses eligible for just that very reason. They're up to, eligible for up to $100,000 in grant funding if they've already accepted only $1,000 through the PPE, that really, or the PPP program, Payroll Protection Program, that really limits. So just as our congressional delegation, Senators Murkowski and Sullivan have said, apply, and if you get rejected, keep that rejection letter, because it's very likely it'll be overturned by the state legislature. So I just wanted to get that on the record. And we did forward that to Kathy Renfelt over the chamber, and she circulated that in her e-newsletter to the, to the chamber membership. So we have another caller on the line. If you could state your name for the record and three minutes, please. Now you're on the line. If you could state your name for the record and three minutes, please.
Hi, this is Kathy Renfelt from the Court of the Chamber of Commerce. So I wanted to come to know a couple things. I wanted to echo some of the comments that Kristin Carpenter said about the need to be communicating to legislature that the CARES Act distribution to businesses should be available for businesses, a wider array of businesses. For one, it'd be nice for it to be available to businesses that have received small amounts from the PPP and IDL programs through the SBA. And to claim, I did follow up with Lee's Staff Matgraining on this topic, and he, although nothing is certain yet, he made it sound like they were actually leaning for the second round, the distribution of monies to enact those changes to the program. So now would be a time to reach out to them, for everybody that has an interest to reach out to them and promote that message. Another area that the CARES Act and the SBA funding has been limited for businesses and organizations is for 501 organization, nonprofit organizations that cannot qualify as standard 501(c)(3). Examples would be the fire department is a 501(c)(4), the Chamber is a 501(c)(6), the marketing, or the, yes, I believe is a 501(c)(6). I think the Moose Lodge is a different type of 501(c) organization, and there are several of those out and around in Cordova that are not the standard 501(c)(3), so they are not eligible for any of these funds. Unfortunately, those are the same groups that are ineligible for any funds that could be distributed through the Cordova Community Foundation. While I personally am a strong supporter of the Cordova Community Foundation, as far as getting funds to nonprofits in Cordova through them via CARES Act funding, I might suggest that we also, you know, move some of that money around to be distributed through the city to 501(c) organizations that are not standard 501(c)(3). And not to say that the Cordova Community Foundation could not receive some money through this program to be a standard 501(c)(3), but they have been, those organizations have been eligible for all of these different types of funding that the other types of 501(c)(3) have not been eligible for. The last thing I wanted to say is just that we are grateful for any support that the Chamber can receive through CARES Act funding to keep supporting businesses. Happy to be working with the city on some ideas and programs for that. And, but I do, and I, giving distributions to individuals to get that money circulating in the economy. I would ask the council to also consider the possibility of providing some limited grants to small businesses that have not been eligible for any of these other types of relief programs. I know of a few in town that for different reasons have just not been able to fix the eligibility requirement for any of the other programs that have come out through the SBA or the state CARES Act. So I would consider that that would be something that maybe the council should talk. And lastly, one more thing with the travel restrictions, thanks for getting that clarified for everyone. I'm getting calls often here at the Chamber office from people trying to plan their trips to Cordova for the sport fishing season and other times of the year, or for the sake of curiosity, or planning to come home, or planning to visit family here. So being able to have some clear guidelines for what they need to do and how Cordova is handling it compared to the state is very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Okay, next item on the agenda, council, is a discussion of COVID-19 emergency response. And I'll just go through council list here. And this, again, is just general discussion of COVID-19 emergency response. Councilman Schaefer.
Um, I don't think I have anything more to add at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, thank you. I listen to a program quite often with Dr. Gottlieb is on there. He's the former head of CDC. And recently he was talking about the going back to work, and I thought this may be interesting to the city manager and maybe even the co-op managers, but what his recommendation was, well, first of all, he talked about the whole fever thing, you know, checking temperatures. And they said there was a study in New York where they found that 30% of the people that were admitted did show a fever. So not a high percentage, that just because you have or don't have a fever doesn't mean you have it. But what they were recommending is basically a symptom checklist, and he was saying that, you know, you would, before you go into work, on your air, at work, you would go through and check off all of the symptoms, and if you had any of those, then the next step would be a fever check. And then, of course, if things progressed, you'd go get tested. But I thought that was a pretty good way of maybe getting people running out of businesses. What those symptom checks are, I don't know. In fact, you could work with your health staff on that, but I thought that was an interesting way to maybe proceed and might even be a way to let public into City Hall for doing business, too. As far as, I think there seems to be concern about people coming and going on airplanes, and I've flown quite a bit since February 1st. I went down to Seattle, spent three days in Seattle, returned there March 8th, spent three days. Now in February, the virus was there, but they didn't really realize it. So I was down there at that time, and then by the 8th, they kind of knew about it. They weren't requiring masks, but things were being cleaned up. I recently did a trip to Michigan. So again, stayed in Seattle and then into Detroit, and then spent a couple of weeks traveling around Michigan. So to me, the flying could be safer right now. Planes aren't full, they're not, even in first class, they're not booking all those seats. They'll get a first-class seat, the seat next to you will be empty. They're not filling them, and they're keeping the center seat, this is on Alaska Airlines, the center seat open. So the planes smell like disinfectant, they're not serving food. The airport, there's not as many people in there, everybody's keeping their distances. Food services, everybody's acting appropriately. So I don't, I don't think it's a big issue of people coming and going. In fact, if you wanted to travel, you know, it's probably the safest time. The other thing I found traveling around Michigan, speaking with a lot of friends and relatives and just people, is their governor came down pretty hard on them. They had that shutdown fight, and they were loosening it up, and over and over again, people are just saying they're over it. And I think that's a danger when you, when you just keep pushing, pushing, pushing. It's kind of like the boy that cried wolf too much. People just kind of tend to get fed up, and then that's not what you want to have happen, because then they kind of get more towards a reckless behavior. I think if we keep this moderate approach, and I think so far we're doing that, we're kind of getting there, is keep everybody on their toes, but not, not, you know, really pressing this as hard that this is some kind of emergency. Because I do think we're gonna, we may face some issues in the fall when we get back to our flu season and the pandemic can kind of come around again. And so if somebody's not with a mask, as long as they're outside and they're, they've got their distance, and I don't, I don't see anybody to get all fired up and riled about it. I think wearing that mask in the grocery stores or in the post office places where you can't keep your social distance is definitely an appropriate thing to do, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vice Mayor Meyer.
Um, yeah, I think there was a good discussion, and I appreciate the people calling in and offering some suggestions. I do worry about some of these businesses that have possibly fallen through the cracks of stuff that's available. So I just think that we need to have that on our radar to assess, because I know they are changing things on federal, state levels, and it's hard to keep up with, but there are going to be some people falling through the cracks, so just to keep that on our radar for this CARES funding, help fill those in. One thing that has been kind of on my mind, that I don't know that the city can do it, is something on utilities. And I know some of these businesses having to be shut down when they're required to, or just the complete loss of revenue of not having businesses keeping up with those large facilities with the city utilities can be really expensive, and also even just our electricity with sales tax that the city collects on those types of utilities, maybe something that we should be looking at. Yeah, just a lot of, a lot of moving parts going on, a lot of things changing, and we need to do what we can. I really do feel for this all and winter, and wondering what's to come, and none of us really know, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Ellison.
Yeah, I don't have anything more to add. Just want to thank the IMT and the medical team for doing a quick review of the new state mandates and getting those approved by the cities as soon as possible. Anytime the word different from the state creates a lot of heartache for a lot of people in explaining the differences in that, so appreciate the work that they're doing.
Okay, Councilman Sherman.
Sure, I just, we did have an IMT meeting this morning, and I just wanted to add a few things that will be happening kind of this week. But Parks and Rec is working hard to bring about opening some of their facilities, and they, of course, are some of the most challenging facilities to open, but they are working on opening the pool, still have some things to put in place in the gym, hoping to open up Gator's Cabin for reservations. And again, that will be with cleaning involved in between, and the campground's at 50% capacity right now. So they are trying really hard, and I understand that it's a complicated process, as the manager stated. So I just wanted people to know that they're working towards it, to be patient. They're getting there, but they want to do it as safely as possible.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gard.
I guess I too would like to comment on making sure we haven't got any businesses or livelihoods left out from assistance. I know there are some businesses we've asked more and longer commitments from than others in town, and I'd just like to make sure everybody was treated fairly in this when it all falls out. But anyway, other than that, I think everybody's doing a great job. Thank you again to the IMT and the medical team. Without them, this would be pretty well impossible. Anyway, thank you very much. That's all.
Councilman Gleason.
Well, just a couple of things. One is, have you guys talked about putting a hand sanitizer station down at the post office? Because that's like the scariest, you know, you got to open that door and...
We've, we've ordered a lot of freestanding hand sanitizers for distribution throughout the community, but as you can well imagine, everything is back-ordered, so we're doing our best.
Yeah, that would be a nice one. And then the other thing is, and I think Dr. Sanders already made her position on this, but if the medical team could just put their position on face masks on the record and maybe set some minds at ease that we're not just doing this to, you know, to make people uncomfortable, we're doing this because we think it's going to protect the community. And, and it's inconvenient, I get that. Very inconvenient. I chug up and down that ramp every day with this mask on, I'm not getting as much air as my body wants, that's for sure, and I notice. So this is an inconvenient problem, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. We'll give another shot for audience comments. I know we took a few in between. I hope council doesn't mind to try to strike a balance between encouraging public feedback, which is a little challenged in this format, without disrupting the flow of the agenda. So that number again is 253-6202, and we don't see any calls at this time, so we'll go ahead and go forward with council comments. I just remind that there's a regular meeting next Wednesday, if there's any agenda items or anything for that council packet. So council comments, starting with Vice Mayor Meyer.
No comments. Thanks, everyone.
Sherman.
Um, I think it was a very good meeting, and it's nice to say that there is a little bit of influx of money, no matter what the cause behind it. And while we were meeting today, the state added 20 more cases since yesterday, so we have a total of 593, 190 are active now, so just going to throw that in.
Schaefer. Councilman Schaefer.
Sorry, it took me a minute. Sorry, it took me a minute to get to my mute button. Yeah, no, I just want to give a big thank you to our medical team and the management team and our city manager for all their hard work guiding us through all of this. And thank you to city staff for all the work they're doing to reopen facilities, such as the parks and the gym and the library and et cetera, what Kathy Sherman went through. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Gleason.
No, nothing to add. Just thank you to staff and IMT for all their hard work.
Councilman Ellison.
Yeah, thanks to everybody for the work that they've been doing and... Yeah, thanks to everybody for the work that they've been doing, and regarding the pending agenda, Mr. Mayor, you and I have talked about an item for executive session, just want to be sure that that'll be on the agenda next week for an update on the CCMC stuff.
Yes, yeah, I'm putting that on the agenda, council, and I'm working with the manager and clerk to go into that executive session. Councilman Gard.
Was that Councilman Gard yourself?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Again, thanks to everybody. As the home term goes, it takes a village. So, thank you, everybody, for everything, and that's all I've got.
Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, same here. Thanks to staff and all your hard work and everybody, and I need to give a thought to want to help everybody out, maybe we can do a reduction in property tax for everybody, that would hit the whole community. Thanks, thanks to everybody.
Okay, thank you, council, and we don't have any audience comments calling in, no executive session, so have a motion to adjourn. And a second, Councilman Gard, are any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.